Expected or present? No. Thank you. So.
Oh, here's Martha.
Oh, Martin, good. Welcome, Martin.
Hello, sorry I was late.
That's okay, it's good to see you.
It is.
Of course it is. Well, we've means we've got four councillors present, which is not not a huge amount really, but anyway, that's the way it is. And we're quorit, so that's great. Then item number one is the election of chair. Now, I'd like to propose John as chair. Do we have a second?
We'll all second that.
Thank you, Sue and Martin. So it looks like that has to be unanimous, I think, if I'm proposing and you two are seconding.
Yeah.
That's great. So hand over to the new chair then.
Okay, thank you, Margaret, and thank you for chairing this committee over the last few years. You've done a stunning job and please remain on the committee an active member because obviously we need your proofing skills, which are second to none.
I sometimes think you'd rather they weren't there, particularly the Bethany and Louise yourself to activate action on. Anyway, there you go.
Yeah, but thank you for chairing this this group over these years, everything else. And obviously I chaired this group a few years back, so it's nice to be back to chairing it again. So that's good. Okay, so the next item on the agenda then is the election of a vice chair. And I'd like to propose Martin Try.
Well, as we don't have very many choices, it's a narrowing funnel, isn't it?
I'll second.
Well, you got in before me.
Okay, so seconded by councillor Gately then. Martin, I well, I presume you're willing to be vice chair?
Um, I think I'll have a go. I was I was late because my father's here and we've just been out for lunch. And I said, you know, in all the years I've been a councillor, I've not actually chaired a committee. So, you know, this may be the closest I get.
Well, there will be times when I'm not around.
Oh, please.
I've got my camper van and certainly I intend to go off for a chunk of September. So there will be at least a couple of meetings, possibly more where I won't be here. So you will be chairing this. Sorry about that.
All right, I think I may be able to control soon.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, both Margaret and I do have camper vans, of course, so we will be going off to the blue yonder at various points. Okay, all right, thank you, Martin. Oh, Sue, yes?
Yes, I'm getting one.
You've got one too?
No, I'm getting one.
Don't leave me, don't leave me all on my own.
Maybe we need to schedule when we go away so we're not all away at the same time.
The new club you're forming, I'm getting worried now.
Yeah, but still, we are only a working group at the moment, aren't we? So we can let the officers do what they need to do anyway without really our involvement. I mean, I think it's an easy. Respect. Are you shaking your head for?
And there's nothing stopping people diving into Zoom one from a camper van.
No.
Good point, good point.
Unless actually viewing the western halves of Scotland takes a bit of precedence, maybe. Or I'm driving along. Of course, there was that wasn't that that chap in in southern some southern state where he was actually in a meeting when he had a steep across it and a fake background or something. Anyway, right, let's move on then. So thank you. Councillor Try is duly elected vice chair. Right, item three, we see a verbal report from the town clerk on the clarification of the status of the meeting. Over to you, town clerk.
Oh, yes, this is what I'm saying every meeting at the moment. Some apologies, it's boring. Just to clarify, it's a working group, not a committee, so technically any decisions made will be delegated to me to agree or to recommend to all councillors.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Apologies for absence. We haven't received any as far as I'm aware. Is that correct?
What apart from?
Rabina.
Rabina.
Oh, Rabina, of course. Yes, we call Rabina's apologies, yeah. But we haven't got apologies from from Ryan though, councillor Willits. Okay, all right. Meeting notes, I haven't dug those out as yet, but I'm sure they're fine. Did anybody else have any any queries on those notes? Nope. Okay, fine. We'll accept those meeting notes as previously circulated from the meeting on the 22nd of April. Right, item seven, newsletter review. Okay, we actually haven't published a newsletter yet, have we? It's it's presumably with the printers as we speak. Is that correct, Bethany? Yeah, you're shaking, you're nodding your head. Okay. So we can't really comment on the distribution because it hasn't been distributed for one of these sort of weird times where things get a bit out of kilter. Were there any messages from or lessons from the production and quality? It looks great, I have to say. And I always gone through various iterations. Any comments on the newsletter that we've currently got in process? No, yes, so Margaret, you go on.
Yeah, I just I guess it was just a bit tricky. I'd like I'd value the comments of Louise and Bethany because we had quite a few bits that had to be done at the last minute. It's probably been harder to get that one sorted. But when is it due to be distributed, do you know?
So it'll be distributed at the end of June. I would agree, it's been it's been a tricky one. We have six drafts of this newsletter, which is far more than we would normally do. Part of that was to do with information that was coming in at the last minute, that the information from the councillors actually slotted in quite well and we have the councillors were really responsive about getting the information we needed to us. Events has been the most tricky part, so there is one error in the event schedule, which is that brand productions are in there, but they won't be attending. And we did, I think that we will get away with it because we were aware we weren't, we were a little on the fence about what to do with them anyway. So what we've done was put in a QR code and that links to a page on our website, which now has a message which explains that the event is cancelled.
So which event was being cancelled, Louise? Which event?
It was the brand, it was the brand productions at the beginning of Fringe Week. So it was the event that was going to be in Ward Park, that Buckinghamshire Council had arranged.
Okay, okay. So brand productions.
It was called brand productions, yeah.
It was. So it was they're a company who Buckinghamshire Council have commissioned to provide events in five or six towns across the county. So they were going to bring in a stage and a bus and do a theatre, a open air cinema and a couple of other things at no cost to us in Ward Park.
You can't get it down the lane.
Well, don't even ask about the bird's nest, that was going to be a nightmare. But before we got to those issues, they contacted yesterday or day before to say that actually they're not selling anything like the tickets they thought they would elsewhere in the county. So they entirely pulled out of the project. So quite, so whether that's because they hadn't advertised it enough, they're a commercial organisation, or whether it's just that people were too nervous around the county to sign up.
That probably is the case, isn't it? Yeah.
But obviously it's really frustrating for us in Amanda that at that very late stage, what was going to be a really big part of the style of fringe is now just disappeared.
I think they were being very ambitious with their ticket sales anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, these things happen and obviously I I I concur with what you say, Margaret, that that the production, I mean, it did strike, we went through six iterations, which seems to be quite a large number, but I think that was a product of all the stuff coming in. But I do think we need to be careful about having, we talked about this last time, about having too many iterations. Because I think if you look, you'll always find something to change and something to tweak. I think we ought to try and set ourselves a limit that we have no more than, I don't know, three at 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 most, unless there are. Margaret?
Well, yeah, I agree with that absolutely. I think what what might be helpful is when we, if there is a need for another draft, you highlight what's been changed. So we only look at that little bit. If there's something, a new article has come in for some reason, then we only look at that rather than keep rejigging what we've already seen. What I tend to do is because I keep a record of the suggestions I've made. So I then only go through those things. But but it'd be helpful to know that there's a new article or or some major changes somewhere.
Okay, okay. Would that be useful to you guys, Bethany, Louise?
Yeah, we can do that. That's a good idea.
I think it also will limit as well what people comment upon. I mean, as you know, I didn't do much commenting on the iterations because I was caught up with the campaigning in the election and so forth. But I I I generally think that we need to be because we'll always find some T not crossed or I not dotted and so on. And I think whilst it's good to have that level of 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 proofing going on, there's a point at which we live with it, I suppose, Martin.
What programme do you use to build the newsletter? Is it Publisher?
No, we have a graphic designer that does it for us. We send them the textual context and the pictures and they put it.
Oh, I see. You you know the sort of layout. You don't do anything yourself.
Um, no, not not at the moment.
No, I was just wondering whether we could, you know, have anything like track changes or something because we just have it on a PDF. But.
It's definitely something we could think about if we ever decided to do it in house, yeah.
Maybe talk, is it? It's Christina, isn't it, from Black Dog? Is it Christina?
Yeah.
Maybe talk to her and see whether she has any ideas perhaps.
About fact changes, yeah.
Yeah, about track changes or or trying to make the process a little bit more efficient. And that that's not criticism of her, it's more of a criticism of us because I know this time there were lots of changes coming in as we as we spoke and so on.
Yeah, I would say that this was an unusual one. I I wouldn't anticipate that we'd go through six again in the autumn.
Well, that's because it was an election going on and there was other things happening. It was just, it's just maybe four years from now, we perhaps think about doing things a little bit differently, perhaps, I don't know. Let's keep that in mind when we get to 2025, which will be our next elections. Like, actually, will it be? I don't know. Yeah, we're now elected for a four year term, aren't we? So we elections won't be up till the four. Is that correct?
Well, that's right. Yeah, we're back to four years now.
Okay, we're not going to shorten it because of because we were meant to have it last year, 2024 or something.
No, no, wishful thinking, John.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's move on then to the next item. Anything else to come up from that item?
Um, did you mind if I add just one thing? And just to say that I'd heard from Countess Howe this morning that she will record the audio for the summary edition. So we should have that by the end of the month.
Sorry, councillor?
Countess Howe.
Countess Howe. Oh, brilliant, fantastic. That's great. That's great. Okay, that's good. Okay, Margaret?
Can I just check? Which one is she recording? The one that we're about to get or the next one?
The summer one that we're about to get.
Okay, great.
Okay, that's really good. That's great. I mean, I think that's just a nice thing to have got. She's the new Lord Lieutenant, isn't she? Yeah, brilliant. That's that's a lovely thing to have got her to do that. I think we need to, I think that probably deserves a press release when we get to it, maybe. What do you think?
Yeah.
I think that shows us in the forefront of, you know, recognising and supporting and connecting with the new Lord Lieutenant. Martin?
Only if she wants. Ask her first.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Moving on then to item eight, which is the future newsletter. We'll go through this from the top as per usual, front cover, suggestions for cover topic theme. Okay. And you're saying a large group from one of the summer events might be a nice thing to celebrate a new autumn when hopefully we'll be out of the the COVID restrictions and so on. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Do we have? We're okay. We said, we say on our website, any of you attending events are likely to be photographed. Therefore, we infer we infer your permission as given type thing, don't we?
Yes, we do. And if we we could probably take some shots where people aren't identifiable anyway, but you still get a certain
Okay, I think that's a good idea. So we wait to see what that might be. Okay, is that right with everybody? Right, moving on. Message from our mayor, you got any thoughts about what you want to put in the next next copy?
Not yet. So if anybody's got any ideas, let me know.
Well, that's just the nor the normal welcome one, isn't it? You know, it's the new mayor.
No, I've already done that in the one that we're waiting for.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I mean, we've got a section in there about the mayor's charities. You could maybe talk a bit more about the mayor's charities as to why they're important to you.
Good idea.
Would be one suggestion. And obviously some recognition that we're back into some sort of new normality, what the whatever the new normality is going to be.
Maybe.
And maybe what have we learnt about, you know, what, you know, what are the positives to draw out of the pandemic? As well as recognising that obviously a lot of people in the town, I've no idea what the numbers are, but there will have been people in the town who will have been either seriously ill and mabs led with some long COVID and of course there would have been people who will have died as a result.
Yeah.
I don't personally, I don't, I don't like calling it the new normality. It things are, things are going to be different. I think we need to talk about it as being post-COVID. Yet that we've had pre-COVID and now we're going into post-COVID.
Okay.
One of the things that that struck me was the members of the public who came along and said that I mean, there's been absolutely dreadful things that have happened, but there have been some good things that maybe we can think about. And the the way that people have been able to engage more with the town council, the way that Zoom has been very well received in the recordings. And so perhaps some reflection on how we can extract the good things.
Yeah, so maybe maybe talking about perhaps, Margaret, maybe about how the town council is going to be different as a result of of the pandemic and so lockdowns and so on.
Okay.
Well, you've got to celebrate Buckingham that will happen beforehand. You can maybe think of things that have come out of that. And as John said, how to how the council is going to shape things in with the new makeup of the council.
Yeah, yeah. Warm words about a fresh council with more dynamism and more.
More youths.
More youngsters.
All the youngs as well. The average age must have gone down.
Yeah.
I think.
Thanks, Brian.
And indeed, the average gender has changed as well. I do think we've got more women on the council than ever before. So there's a better gender balance than I think this town council has ever had now with the election of Fran. Yeah, go on, Margaret.
And more diversity generally, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
More representative of the community we serve.
Yeah, and I think that's a good thing. Absolutely. Okay, so four pages on the roundup of all those events that you've listed. Okay. With lots of lovely pictures and the usual upbeat, wasn't it wonderful to get out everything else? Okay. Next point is the usual list of calendars, councillors rather, numbers, use your account that stuff and the events calendar on the back page. So we all okay with all of that? Okay. Right, so we've got a remaining seven and three quarter pages. Okay. So what have we got left then? So we've got things that we put in before when the money came and how we spent it. The usual, is that when we have the graphic, Louise?
Sorry, I just want to say that there is more than seven and three quarter pages worth of suggestions here. So we won't be able to include all of them.
Right, okay, okay. Well, let's keep it running totally. And so the ones in bold are things we've done before and that or and all need to go in.
Yes, I'd say so.
Okay. So that means we've got two, two and a half three and a quarter then. Yeah. So in bold, the three and a quarter pages. Which that means then that gives us four pages left then. Is that right? So have I got my maths correct?
Four and a half.
Four and a half. Oh, yes, you're right, because it's seven and three quarters. Okay, so four and a half pages. Okay, so so are we all the 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 four in bold then? We all agreed with those should go in? And we'll get Warren to write something about himself, Margaret?
Yeah, wasn't that already in, Warren? Didn't, wasn't that in the current one or not?
I don't think so. Wouldn't have we decided?
No, we we thought we'd give you space in one and then Warren in the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll get one to write something about himself and his ambitions, hopes for the council and so on from the deputy mayor. Yeah, I think that'd be nice. Okay, so that means we've got four and a half pages left. So and we got more. Okay, before we come to the ones you've suggested, are there any other ideas that people would like to propose to go into the list?
And I just make one one comment, bearing in mind that we're in a public meeting. I think about the informal we had and the other nominations rewards on Monday night. I presume you'd want to do something about those as well?
Yeah, when do we've, well, we've got civic award recipients is the next item on the bullet pointed list, are you saying?
But we might want to beef that up a bit, I guess, with those additional ones.
Oh, well, you mean more than one page? We need more than one page for that.
Possibly.
Okay, okay. We possibly have two other people to talk about then. So is that another page then? So civic award recipients would be two pages.
Or one and a half, what do you think, Louise?
How many people in total is it?
Well, we've got about, we've got four or five awards already, haven't we?
Yeah.
Plus the two additional who'd want to.
Yeah, yeah.
So paragraph each.
You've got.
Page and a half, that would probably fit.
Okay. Okay, so civic awards. One point five. Okay, all right. And then, all right, so on that, then the mayor's charities, I think it's important because obviously a lot of these things otherwise would have been spoken about at the annual century meeting, but obviously we we haven't done much about that because we didn't really have a do, as it were. So I think the mayor's charities, I think, does need to go in because we do want people to put money in for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's okay.
Agree with agreeable with everybody? So you could mention them briefly in your intro bit and then with a bit more detail in in there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Right, Bard of Buckingham election. Are we going to get the thing out in time for the fourth of October? And do we want it in? When's the schedule, Louise? Because if it's that close on timing, you know, if we're going out the week or two before, I think it.
It is quite close. So the distribution date starts on the 23rd of September. And I believe there's two weeks that the new distributor allows, so they'll still be being delivering potentially into early October.
Yeah.
On the other hand, that might mean people read it the day before the election and think, oh, I might go out tomorrow night then.
Well, I think it's important, I think also perhaps if we talk about the election, but also maybe a vote of thanks to what Dean's done over the last two years as well. And that's 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 perennial, isn't it? That needs to go in too.
Yeah. Good idea.
Bard of Buckingham, thanks and election maybe is what it ought to be. Is that a great?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we got one and a half pages, no, two pages left. We're up, we've got 4.5. Okay, so that means we've got two pages left at the moment. Okay. Calendar art photography contest. Summer anti-littering. Chamber bookings. Thank you to the councillors who are now rest in the council. Any preferences amongst the list we've got left there as to where we we've got two more pages left to fill?
Margaret's got a hand, John.
Oh, sorry, Margaret. I'm looking at I'm looking at two things. Yeah, go on, Margaret.
Okay, well, a couple of things really. Just wondered who's preparing these articles? Who's doing the Bard of Buckingham one? Is that something that the office sought out? And and then, yeah, go on, answer them.
Um, I'd suggest we ask Dean to do it.
All right, okay. And then then the second.
Oh, hang on, hang on, let me come in there. I don't, I'm not sure that's fair, is it? Dean's done such a lot. I think it would be good if somebody else wrote it and wrote it about him and wrote about the next thing. I don't think he can write about his successor in a way, can he? That would be quite tough. And if we're going to make part of the article about thanking him, he can't write thanking himself, can he?
What about, we could ask Cherry.
Yeah.
Well, she's a future contender as well, of course, isn't she? Paul, could you write it?
I I think we should probably do it in house and run it past Dean.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, go on.
No, go on, Margaret. It's okay.
Well, you were asking about what we should prioritise or have we finished with the bard or?
I think we're done with the bard now, yeah.
Okay, I think it's probably, well, personally think the thank you to councillors who are no longer representing us is probably quite important.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Absolutely.
Would Louise, would given the other things we've just said, would would we still need a whole page for that or would half a page have, right?
And I would suggest you might be able to do it in half a page, yeah. If we're doing a page and a half of the civic.
Well, it depends if we're going to say thank you for what we're just going to say, you know, thank you very much, Terry Bloomfield, Paddy Collins, Mike Smith, Ruth Neil, Christine Strain Clark. Trying to think if those are all the people who will be retiring, aren't they? Or who've now left the council for various reasons.
Paul Hirons.
And Paul Hirons, yeah. So there's six people to write about. Are we just going to make them by name or we're going to add a bit more content? So it's a bit more content, then you're going to quickly do more than half a page, I think.
A half pages is 200 words, so I mean, it doesn't give you.
That's about two sentences per person, isn't it really?
Yeah.
Let's stick with a page then.
I think it's, I think it's going to take a page.
If you put the thumbnails in as well.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
There'll be pics, aren't there? Margaret?
Can I just ask what what's happened previously when we've had this situation? And have we previously put an article in in the newsletter about retiring councillors?
Not as far as I remember.
No, I don't think we have. No, I think this is a new thing. I think it's a nice thing to do.
Yeah.
To honour their contribution to the town and obviously to the town council. Go on, Martin.
What about anything on on bounce back?
Shall we do with this? Shall we do with this item first? We're trying to half a page or a whole page? I'm thinking a whole page is going to be required once you add in photographs and a bit about a little pen portrait of each person. I mean, maybe slightly tongue in cheek, I don't know. Mike, who, Mike, I take no prisoners chair skills and so on, you know. For example, I don't know whether we're going to do something humorous like that, but I think I think a description of what they did during their time and maybe some highlights, maybe consult each one of them. You know, in a sense, how they would like to be not remembered, but like to be acknowledged.
Almost.
You know, it's not quite a, but you they'll know what we've made. Shall we say a page then for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, that leaves us one one page left to go then. I'll come back to your point in a second, Martin. If we've done this calendar photography contest, we've surely got to have that in, haven't we? Otherwise, what are we going to meant to do with it?
And now it's definitely time to put that in.
Okay, so that's the art. So that's another point five. Is that agreeable with everybody?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Paul said.
I said if we're going to put the calendar in, then this is the addition that has to go in.
Has to go in this edition.
Yeah, it's also an advert surely for this year's calendar competition too as well, isn't it? Because we're going to do another Christmas calendar, aren't we?
Yes, assuming TC agree that on Monday, but.
Okay, so therefore it's thank you to the people that before, here's a photography competition and note this date now, but we're going to be running another competition for this year's calendar. Do you want to be in it? Yada, yada, yada sort of thing. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Can I just respond to Martin's point on bounce back?
Yeah, go on.
Just to note that we've got four bits about, in terms of count what council's doing. There are four bits of bounce back and three of those are listed in the roundup of past and future events. So celebrate Buckingham, Alice in Wonderland, the summer market entertainment. So to some extent that'll be there. What we haven't got on that list is the Otter Trail. Which is brilliantly photographically. But whether we could accommodate that in those four pages, Louise?
Um, I would think we probably can, yes. If you wanted to give it more. If you wanted to give it more space, then we could.
I was just thinking on that, that it's quite a nice publication we do. And for historical reasons, it's quite nice to have those listed, you know, what the town did in a succinct way in a, in the publication that goes out to the town. And then everybody can see, you know, what the staff did and what the town did and all sorts, and what the businesses did, sorry, you know, all together, sort of thing. Everybody's trumped it.
Because they're, because most of the funding has gone on events, we could create a section within the events pages that has a slightly different look to it, like maybe a different colour background and makes it clear that those are the bounce back ones that we did. Just to, so to, just to give those four things their own page, for example, within the events review.
Well, sorry, Margaret, go on.
Would it be possible to sort of do a border with bounce back on it? I don't know how that works. Um, you know, surrounding those particular ones. I'm just looking at the, the last newsletter, we've tended to only have things along the top, haven't we, on all the bottom, but if there's a way of doing it, so it's sort of surrounded by bounce back. I can refer to bounce back in my mayor's message as well.
I mean, one radical option would be, as we've discussed later on in the agenda, there is some underspend of the budget that we have got. What would be the cost of having another four pages in the middle? Which would give us some space to add in some of the stuff that we've just been talking about.
I can tell you how much it was for this edition.
Do we need to say that on an open one?
Sorry, say that, Martin?
Do we need to say that on an open recording?
No, probably not.
Probably not, no.
Although chat isn't, isn't displayed on YouTube, is it?
Okay. Well, put it in chat, you mean. Well, I mean, I mean, in a sense, if it's not an extraordinary amount and we have the budget, we can make a decision now, today, to say, because of the need, as you, I forget who said it now, I think it was either Martin or Margaret, I can't remember, sorry, but about this being an historic document. You know, let's, let's have a bumper edition to say, you know, Buckingham bouncing back bumpily.
It's sort of a thank you, isn't it, for the businesses of, you know, for staying with us, for, um, you know, the, the people in the town for supporting those businesses and, and, you know, getting the, the two-way message going and, you know, and for us to sort of, uh, you know, trying to sort of coordinate it a little bit and putting it putting it through.
Okay, I mean, that's my proposal, is that we use some of the budget we've got unspent. And maybe some of the stuff that's been talked about for the other item on the agenda that we're going to come to is could we, could we put that in, in here as well? Could that be take up two of the pages or something like that? I'm looking, I'm scrolling down here, the item, summer in Buckingham, sort of thing. I mean, we've got a, we've got an amount for that. We still, we still got, we're still within budget though, aren't we? There's a predicted one thousand pound underspend. So even if we have these extra four pages, we can still afford to have that summer in Buckingham insert or other thing as well.
And with Margaret's suggestion, having a border going, reduce the word count. So you could almost do the, the middle pages as the bounce back across the two pages.
Yeah.
You know, with pictures, it's going to be hardly, you know, any words at all, really.
So that means we can afford to put in the, the anti littering campaigns, the wildfire art contest and everything else that we've got on the list there.
But it leaves you with two extra pages, basically.
What's the chamber bookings about, by the way?
What, sorry?
What's the chamber bookings one page, that list?
Oh, that's because the chamber's now going to be new and shiny and we're going to be looking to hire it out apart from on Monday nights. So it's promoting that as a thing.
Okay, okay, well, that could go in somewhere, but it doesn't take a whole page though, does it?
No, we could do a half page.
Yeah. I mean, the page that I was going to suggest putting in as well, and now I've lost track of how many pages we need, but let me just say it anyway. Is, is something about volunteering in the town? Is that that we've had lots of people wanting to, you know, support the community during the pandemic? And how can we kind of maintain that level of community spirit and volunteering for the, our whole town, for our neighbours, for our community and so on? That was what I was thinking of and I'll write something if you want me to. Just for half a page, they're saying, don't stop, in a sense, don't stop now. You know, everybody's efforts during the pandemic were really appreciated by many, many people, many communities and so on. Just because we're getting back to, you know, our, our post-COVID era, as Sue pointed out, these things, don't give up now, carry on, enjoy being a volunteer.
That could be linked to the Celebrate Buckingham event, so you could put a list of the organisations who attended and even their contact details of the ones who wanted volunteers.
Yeah.
Have a kind of narrative through this, we did this event to help these organisations.
Yeah, yeah, but also things like Speed Watch. Various bodies that are crying out for support and so on. Okay, all right, so I'll, go on, Martin.
Well, so I think Sue was first.
Sue.
I, I agree that this has been absolutely historic, um, event that's befallen us all. Um, and, and we do need to mark it in, in some way. But I'm wondering if, if just having, having, well, I thi, I think there should be some special pages, maybe in, in the newsletter. But, but should there be something more? Should there be something permanent? Or is this something we could maybe ask the town? How, how can it be? How can we, um, remember it?
I think that's a very good question, but I think it's probably outside what we're talking about this afternoon, Sue, but I think it's a good point. I think we need some sort of memorial somewhere. I think we're talking about that in other places, I'll be on, on, we're talking about. I thought we were. Paul, Louise, Bethany?
I can't, I can't think of an agenda item you're at the moment.
Well, perhaps we should put it to the next full council meeting then.
I mean, I, I, I am aware that Milton Keynes, um, made a maze, I believe, or something. You know, I'm just thinking that it's so historic, it needs something a bit more than a few pages in a, in a bulletin.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
What do people want? I mean, maybe, it may be, there could be something in the bulletin that kicks off, um, a debate about it, you know, asking people, what do you think we should do?
I'd be cautious doing that without having been agreed first by full council though, Sue.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think, I don't think we can bounce the full council into a decision by putting it in the newsletter. I think they'd be ready, hacked off with us if we did.
Yeah.
But I think what you're proposing is a good idea.
Or maybe it's safe, that we, there, we are, we are thinking, what, what should we do? This is, this is history.
Yeah.
But we're, we're not thinking that yet, is the point, as a town council. So we might be, but I think we've got to be careful not, as I say, not to set the agenda. Our job is to reflect the agenda of the town council, um, rather than try and drive it, as it were, much as that appeals to me.
So, um, I'll put that on the agenda for full council, maybe we can have a chat about what, actually how we would, what the options are.
Yeah.
But I think as this is the first edition that we're bringing out, in a sense, post-pandemic, touch wood. Then I think, I'll be agreed, extra four pages.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, we're good there. Okay, right, so we've got four extra pages. Okay, we'll come to what those are. Martin?
Just coming back on what Paul was saying about, um, listing the volunteers on Celebrate Buckingham, uh, Day and, you know, the people involved in that. Uh, I know of two organisations that I'm involved with who are not going to be attending the Celebrate Buckingham, they are heavily voluntary dependent. But they decided that that sort of day wasn't for them. Even though some of them don't need volunteers and the other one, uh, does need volunteers, but it wasn't the sort of day that they thought they could, uh, do something for. So I know it's a tricky one. But, you know, not everybody that wanted it or doesn't want it, but still has volunteers, is going to be at Celebrate Buckingham Day. So we need to, uh, maybe list them, but, you know, say there are others out there which, uh, are still wholly involved in the town, but may not be represented on this, uh, on this particular day.
Absolutely, okay.
Can I clarify where we're at with pages? So we've added an extra four pages. We want to add one extra page to the four events pages so that two of them can be specifically about the bounce back events. Is that correct?
Middle ones.
Yep. And we're going to include the half page of the chamber. Do we want, so we, we want a separate one page on volunteering? Is that agreed?
I think so. I think there's room to do that. And I think there's scope to say there are many organisations in the town and maybe we can't put the list in the article, but we can say, you know, genuinely, if you're interested, please contact the town clerk or visit this webpage on the town council site. I mean, I think that's our role as a town council, often to act as a signpost. So I think if there isn't a page on our website that says, these organisations are looking for some more, some more help and here are some contact details. So it could be the Scouts, it could be Dementia Alliance, it could be League of Friends, it could be, you know, yada, 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 lots of different organisations in the town. And we get something of a list on there and for people to kind of consult and say, oh yeah, I fancy doing a bit of stuff. What's good for me? Oh, let's go and join in with young carers or let's go and join.
That's really good, John, yeah.
So, so let's agree, we, we have an article that signposts people towards that, that highlights, you know, what happened on that, um, uh, brilliant Buckingham, um, page, what's it called? I've forgotten, where has it gone?
Celebrate Buckingham.
Celebrate Buckingham, but also put something up on the website and link the article to that. So what we're doing as a town council is that we're kind of holding, supporting, you know, nudging people towards, you know, voluntary action to maintain that kind of so, solidarity that we had during the pandemic. Let's carry on with that, you know, that, let's not let this peter out. Okay, so we, so what about, go on.
I think that leaves us with two pages to fill.
Well, we have, what about the spotlight page, the wildfire art contest banners, litter picking groups, all that kind of stuff.
Did you include the calendar, Louise?
Yes, we got the art.
Yes, I've included the calendar.
We've got that already, yeah. So we got the spotlight pages that you've mentioned, we've got the volunteering half page. Are we, is that it? Or we've got half a page left?
So you wanted to include anti littering and lace hill?
Well, littering was a, was a feature, wasn't it? I mean, I bought myself a new litter bigger because I broke my last one trying to get rid of a stinging nettle. I didn't realise you can't use it like a paracatur. So there we go, so that's got thrown away. So my litter bigger became more litter, fortunately, in my bin. But yeah, so I think people have been out, you know, we know Mark does it on a regular basis and we know lots of people will do as well. I think anything we can do to encourage less littering or take action, because unfortunately there are always going to be people who like to litter. God knows why, but they like to do it. Martin?
There was an interesting article on the radio, um, with Japan who don't have very many litter bins. And they were saying, maybe putting litter bins out actually, you know, introduces litter. Where if you don't have them in Japan, they are under the way of taking it home themselves. But, um, I don't think that ethos and mindset is here in this country, but it's, you know, it's an interesting way of looking at it.
Well, I, I had an interesting conversation earlier in the week with a, with an official from Facebook, because I'm part of a kind of Facebook community that comments on how Facebook operates and she was based in Singapore. And of course, in Singapore, chewing gum is banned. You can't buy chewing gum in Singapore, because they recognise people leaving it all over the shop and we know what it's like on our pavements in this country. So you can't buy chewing gum anymore in Singapore. In fact, it's illegal to sell it. Margaret?
Yeah, so I'm interested in that comment, Martin, because if you go to Stowe, there are no litter bins there.
True.
You have to, and you don't find litter around.
True, true.
Yeah, but this is a town, isn't it?
It's a different thing, I think. I think, I don't think we can radically propose no litter bins, but I think something. Okay, so we're back, hang on, let's just, before we get lost in lots of different.
It's not boil the ocean.
Tangential boulevards, as they have been called, with the meeting I went to many, many moons ago. So let's, let's stop going down all these tangential boulevards and I'm as guilty as the rest of us, I know that. How many pages have we got left to fill, Louise?
Did you want to include the lace hill spotlight article as well? Because I think if we include that with.
Yeah, I think so. Unless, so as long as we've got the thing about volunteering in and the spotlight. If there's room for the lace hill spotlight, we've got chamber bookings in there as well, yes, we've got that in. So that's everything, isn't it?
That's, that's our fill with an extra four pages, so yeah.
Okay, so we're sorted then. So it's going to be a bumper autumn edition to, 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 in a sense, say, look, this is Buckingham blooming unfurling itself after being in a long winter. It's, it's spring and autumn time. Margaret?
Sorry, just to say, that will be two consecutive bumper editions. Maybe we need to be, uh, I mean, not that I object to it in principle, but maybe we should try to make sure that the next one is the usual size again.
Hang on, is the current edition the bumper edition then?
Yeah.
I lost track of that.
Now you tell us.
Hang on, hang on, is the current edition sixteen pages then?
No, it's twenty.
Twenty pages?
Yeah.
So I missed that. Twenty pages, it's the current edition.
Yeah, so the next one will be twenty-two.
It's going to be, it's going to be a multiple four.
Oh, twenty-two, twenty also.
Sorry, yeah, okay. Right, okay. Okay, I, I missed that detail, but yeah, why not? To my mind, this is what we're about doing as a town council. It is our job to stimulate the town.
Remote, yeah.
The town, you know, regain its sense of confidence, regain its, its economic, you know, verve and everything else. And if we can do that with good, a good publication that inspires people, isn't that our job as a town council?
Agreed, go forth.
Okay, and if we got the budget for it, well, let's, let's spend money on what we think is a good thing to do. Yeah, agreed with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Moving on then to the next item on the agenda, which is audio newsletter. Who's going to record the next one? So it's going to have to be a man. And Martin, have you recorded one yet?
I have recorded one, so yes.
All right, okay. So, go on, Margaret?
What about asking a new male councillor to do it?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So we have Ryan or Ade, don't we, I think?
Okay. I'm open.
Ryan's due to be in this group, so he'd be the obvious choice, I suppose.
Okay. We could ask Ryan, yeah, yeah, let's do that. I mean, he's the youngest, is he our youngest councillor? I think he is, isn't he?
Yeah.
And he was younger than me.
He's taken my spotlight away from me now.
He has, Martin, because you were the youngest before he came along with.
Yes.
Sorry about that. You're looking very Kier Starmer-esque, by the way, with your haircut and the way you're rounded.
Yeah. Don't worry, after a wash, it'll be okay.
Oh, okay, then, fine, right, good. So, okay, so we'll ask Ryan if he's prepared to do that. Yeah, okay.
And then second candidate will be Addy.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Good idea, okay. I think it'll be your turn next, Sue, by the way. Okay, so publication of councillor contact details. Okay. So publication of council contact details. My question is, why is this on the agenda? I think it's an important question, but how come it's on the agenda? What's the background to this?
So the, as, as some of you know, the legislation has changed slightly. So whereas in the past we had to publish details, you know, election of the British interest, we don't anymore. And also I think there has been a bit of a cultural change. So some of the new councillors are not comfortable having their phone numbers published because they only work with a mobile number. And that's not the norm in the ways it would, once would have been. So as you've seen, I've written the councillors giving them choices around whether they want their details, what details they want on the website and in the newsletter. So councillors do have the right to opt out, I think. But that does lead to a kind of generic question about are we happy to keep publishing details in the way we have been in the past where councillors are happy for that to be so.
Okay. I mean, I have some views about this, but what do other people think first? Martin?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, town clerk. I thought it was a legal requirement to have your details published on some list somewhere. Maybe not on our website or on our leaflet or whatever you like to call it. But I thought it was a requirement that your, maybe it's just address, maybe it's just the address, not, not a, a contact telephone number.
So for the address, you're legally required to state it on your register of interests. But unless you've got permission from the monitoring officer not to. So there is now quite a straightforward process where for whatever reason you're required, you don't want the details to be published. So if someone's a particular police officer, say, or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so there is that mechanism there. And it's not a legal requirement with phone numbers at all.
All right.
And I think it is interesting to talk about the office. I think telephones, different generations, different ages do have different attitudes to phone numbers. Whereas younger people are a bit more cagey about sharing them publicly if they're just working off a mobile.
Yeah. Personally, I put up my landline because that for me is controllable. Putting up my mobile phone number, I would, I, I should decidedly choose not to do that. For me. Because at least my landline, I could, I could, in a sense, block it off by going to, to an answer phone. Whereas with a mobile phone, people can text you or they can WhatsApp you and everything else like that in a way that they can't obviously with a, a landline in quite the same way. And as some people might not know, my address is redacted on, on, on the registration of, of interest form because of something that happened a few years ago. So I've kept my, I've kept my address away from the public domain as far as I possibly can since that particular moment.
We'll just address you to Doctor Who in the box then.
Yeah, I live in the Tardis now. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
So where are we then, Paul, with people giving permission?
Most people have given permission. At least one not for the phone number. So, but, so my, my suggestion would be we'd kind of carry on as before unless somebody chooses to opt out.
Can I make a suggestion? Yeah. So those people that either haven't got an address and or telephone number, could we substitute the office telephone number and or address for them in there so that it's all consistent with addresses and telephone numbers? It may not go directly to them.
Yeah, that's what we've done with John's address on the website.
Right. Okay. There we go then.
We would do that.
Great minds think alike.
Yeah. I, all right. So that's a proposal then. So what we're saying is if people are happy to have their phone numbers up, then we use those numbers. If they're not happy, then what we do is we put up the office number as a contact number. Which means we can then display the numbers like we've always done at the back of the newsletter. But the numbers in there may or may not be directly to them. It might be into the office. Would that be agreeable? And maybe we need to publish as well. People's email addresses too. Or there's a note saying, everybody has a town council email address. You can find these at blah, 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 blah as well. So we're contactable via either our own number, the office phone number or our own personal email address. Because those are public, because they're owned by the town council. I don't think, I don't personally think that councillors should be able to redact their town council email.
Absolutely not. So all the emails are published on the website. So.
Yeah. So we just need to point, so underneath where we have, you know, on the back page, contact details for the phone numbers have a section underneath there and a new section saying all councillors are conductable via their personal email, their personal town council email, which you can find on this website.
Yes.
Yes, we can have that.
Does that agree with it, with, with everybody?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. That seems to accommodate people if they wish keeping their own number private. But also making them accessible, which is an important point. And as we were putting their addresses, I think we stick with the current legislation that people have to put them in their ROI forms unless they have dispensation from the monitoring officer. I mean, when you, as we all know, when we filled out the nomination forms, you have a right to redact your address from the document that goes in the public for the registration of, of nominees or candidates and so on. Although I then did find out that because I was an independent councillor, you are therefore you're also your own agent and therefore that goes on the list too anyway, which is always going to be public. So you can't, you can't withhold it completely. Sue?
I think as well as redacting, is there not an option that says an address in Buckinghamshire? I saw some that were not from this council, but I saw some that were submitted saying that.
Yeah. On the, on the, on the actual election nomination papers. That is what happens when you don't want your address being published.
Oh, that's how it looks.
Yeah, that's how it looks. Then that's how it looked for me because I redacted my address from, from the ballot paper and from the nominee and from the published candidates list as well. I'd rather it said in Buckingham personally rather than in the county because I could have been living in High Wycombe or somewhere. But the format is it's just within the area. Okay. So I agreed on that. Should we move on? Okay. Right. Newsletter style guide. Thank you very much for the work you've done on this, Louise, Bethany, Paul, whoever else has been involved in it. I've got a couple of comments on it. Where am I? Okay. I've got the wrong bit. Bear with me a second. Hang on. Right. So we're looking at appendix B. Broadly speaking, I think this is great. The comments I've got on it is I would not have semicolons at all. I hate semicolons. I think they are archaic, anachronistic and look silly. Personally. If that's, and if that's agreeable, I think we just delete them. We should either use hyphens or colons. I think semicolons are a mess. Margaret?
Well, I, I, I know semicolons perhaps aren't popular, but I think they can be very useful. Instead of very, very long, you know, can break up long sentences, but maybe it is better just to put a full stop and start anew. Because they, yeah, start a new sentence. So I'm not, I'm not too precious about them, but are we saying not at all though?
If I had my way, yes. I'm saying banning semicolons altogether. If you want a longer sentence, break it down into smaller sentences because when we come to plain English, shorter sentences are always best. They make, they make the language more readable. I think semicolons allow you to make longer sentences, which actually increases the, 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 the readability or reduces the re- readability of the text.
I agree with you broadly, John, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm stopped short of banning them altogether.
We could have. Put in semicolons bracket if absolutely necessary, but only if absolutely necessary, put that in as well then. So we just, we just put in a threshold level there.
Because it's similar to what it says with exclamation points. I'd call them.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
You know, discouraged generally, but.
Judicious use of exclamation points and semicolons. Martin?
Have we finished semicolons now?
I, I think we may have. Yes. I think we may have. Go on.
On numbers, why do we stop at 11 in written words? Why not 12? Because it's the same number of as 11.
Yeah, I was curious about that.
And 13 would be better and higher. And then under the.
Let's do it one point at a time, Martin. Let's do it one point at a time. Louise, why, why 11 not 12?
Why 11 not 12? And that's time style guide rules. I got that one from Mark, I'm afraid. That's how he does it.
Oh, right. So this is Mark's advice, him as a journalist and so on.
Yes, there's a, a collection of different style guides I looked at to put this together.
Okay. Okay.
And it's one I picked up from Mark a few years ago. It, it does seem quite standard in various newspapers.
Really?
I don't know why.
Well, let's break the rule.
Well, let's have the Buckingham Town Council style guide then. Let's, let's break the rules and we'll go to 12.
Okay.
Go to 12, 12 days of Christmas and everything else. We can stick with 12. It's a dozen. So the Buckingham dozen will still count then.
So second point under that. What about if we got 45K? Not 45, comma, zero, zero, zero.
No.
No, I, I, I'd always edit that out.
So in all of our graphics and, and other things, we don't have, we don't have 2K, 4K?
In the future.
Okay.
I think graphics can, would graphics be slightly different?
I don't know. You haven't got a section for graphics.
I think, I think we should stick with the thousands in with commas and zeros.
Okay.
Any other changes? Margaret?
Under plain English, where we've got the EG and IE. I think again, we need to probably try to avoid using them as much as possible. But I struggle without the full stops, I have to say. I don't, it, it would look a bit weird to me with no full stops.
Well, E dot G, you mean?
Yeah.
I, 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 I had that thought to start as well because I always use it and I've spent a lot of time reinserting full stops into stuff over the years. But actually, if you look at other style guides, what we've given is the general approach.
Okay. Okay.
But again, it's, this is us deciding what, what Buckingham is, isn't it?
I'm happy, if that's the style guide recommendation, I'm happy to go with that. Certainly I know when I'm typing out EG, E dot G dot is a bit more, EG is a lot easier. Louise, you want to say something? No? Okay. All right. Are you okay with that, Margaret?
I think again, yeah, I think it's a bit like the semicolons. Try not to do it really. I mean, and maybe if we're not allowed to put E dot G, G dot, dot, sorry. Then I will try and avoid using that altogether.
Okay. When it comes, sorry, Martin, go on.
Well, just bringing in the number eight below, last line, take the plural, comma, E dot G dot. The police are human under the man.
Yes, the style guide should be written in line.
Yeah, in the style guide that's meant to be written in.
Yes, absolutely. Right. I've got some comments about the plain English because I've got here a jar I've had for a long, long time. You can tell how long, well, it was even longer than that actually. And I've got 10 recommendations for plain English. One is keep sentences short. Two, prefer the simple to the complex. Three, prefer the familiar word. Four, avoid unnecessary words. Five, put action in your verbs. Six, write like you talk. Seven, use terms your reader can picture. Eight, tie in with your, your reader's experience. Nine, make full use of variety. And 10, write to express, not to impress. And those sort of, you know, that's why I've stuck it on my jar that I have up next to my desk. Those are sort of guidelines that I try and keep to when I write stuff. Would, would, would it be possible to add those into our style guide maybe?
I suggest some of them are in there already, but we can.
True, they are.
Corrate the others. Definitely.
Okay. And the only other thing I wrote down is because we've had debates about this in the past about, especially when we're writing about our events is to write to inspire and uplift. You know, so when, you know, the text should be, people want to read it, it's, it's, it's jolly, it's inspirational, it's not flat. It's, it has verve, it has energy to it. And I know that's difficult to quantify, but I think it should happen. Yes, Martin?
And the last point in the last section, number 10, in the last sentence, do we have to explicitly bring out the word print? Could we not just say all media must be confirmed?
So just would say permissions for use in print and all media.
No, permissions for use in all media must be confirmed.
Oh, I see. Yeah, fine. That seems okay with me. It's okay with you, Louise?
And I'd, I'd need to check it against our permissions forms.
Okay.
It might be separate for print use and social media use. So I'd have to check.
But whatever we do with our printed media, we put on our website in the archive, don't we?
And it depends on what it is and what permission we've got from. So this is really only about pictures with people and that are very recognised to be people. That's, we have to ask them permission before we print them or put them on social media. And some people will say yes to one, but not the other. So it depends what they've said. But it hasn't been that much recently.
Do we want to tie ourselves up in knots in that, you know, finer detail of thinking, oh, should we put it there? Should we, you know, should we check back? Have we got it? You know? It's another level of control that if they don't want it on the media, then let's not use it in the first place.
Yeah, that's probably true. And I think the, the form will already exist and is approved. So I'd have to go back and check what it says.
Agreed. Yes. Okay.
Okay. Okay. But otherwise I think that's great. That's going to benefit us in the, in the future, I think, Paul.
The other two comments made would be, we stopped at 10, we could have come up with more things. So if you do think of anything else in the future, we should add to this, then also let us know. It was a temptation to go for a very long time. And the other thing I was going to say is, once this is agreed, we are then going to cover something very similar, but for report writing and other documents we do as well. So that will definitely become the style guide we do.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. So if we were asking somebody to write a letter, or write an article for the newsletter, we'd send them a copy of this style guide, would we? Would that be the idea? And then do, would you then, I'm just wondering if it's creating extra work for town council staff then having to check all articles coming in against the style guide?
So, well, it will in a way, but hopefully it will save us time in the proofing process when we go through with Christina. Because if the copy that we give her is more accurate, then we won't have to go through as many drafts. So hopefully overall it will be a benefit.
And also it, it widens the number of staff who can edit and check stuff as well. So once it's really clear, then anybody can do that.
Yeah.
It regularises so much of what we've talked about in previous meetings as well. I think it's taken us a few years to get here, but I think we've got here now, which is great, I think. Because we have talked around this off and on, haven't we, in various, in various ways? Okay. Moving on. Okay. Next item on the agenda is ongoing development of existing websites. So we've got the website analytics in appendix C. I think this is really for absorption rather than commenting, I think. I think it's interesting to see the spike that happened around the time of the remembrance, isn't it? That, that is very stark. And there seems to be some sort of regular kind of, is it every month that a spike happens? I don't know. There seems to be sort of, it almost looks like there's a heartbeat going through the page views on, 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 on page one. I don't know what, what happens. That has all got flattened. I think this is because it's been such a strange last, what, 15 months? I think it's very difficult to extrapolate from this, but Martin?
I would like to think that the spike around the remembrance one is because it was being put online at that time. We were asking people not to go to the.
Yes, it was.
That area. And it's nice to see. And it's nice to see a gradual increase in the overall page, unique pages viewed um, as as time goes on. So it's all very encouraging, really.
I think it's very, very positive. I think we're doing a good job on this. Um, and I don't know how it compares to other town councils, but
Who cares?
Who cares? We're doing a good job, exactly. Um, and I think it shows what matters to people as well. The green spaces really matter, don't they? And, yeah, look how much they increased in the last year, the green spaces. That's 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 fascinating, isn't it? You know, two years ago, there wasn't much interest, but in the last year, it's shot up, doesn't it? It's amazing.
To some extent, Louise and Nina will take credit because they really transform the green spaces pages. So they're the ones that have had the most effort and improvement pretty long. But also clearly in lockdown, it's been subject to interest as well.
Yeah. That's it, it's, yeah, I think it's just very, very useful. And as you can see, I was surprised, the demographic, how many young people are accessing our website as well. That struck me is because typically you think that it's sort of town councils, old fogies like us, but actually not the case. We're getting a very good chunk of people visiting the sites in the eighteen to thirty four. In fact, the biggest group who are accessing are in twenty five, thirty four. I guess that could be young families, couldn't it, I suppose, couldn't it, with small children? But I thought it was interesting. I like the graphic of website. It did interest me that we had people from the Republic of Korea visiting our website. I mean, that was one of the, where are we? Green, that was the
That's for the Discover Buckingham website, but yes.
I know. What was that, when you say Republic of Korea, is that South or North Korea?
I assume it's the South, I don't know.
Because it's, isn't it the Democratic Republic of North Korea? D R N K or something? I don't know. Korea, let's put just
Next half for it.
South Korea.
He's going down one of those bill of ours he was talking about.
Oh, North Korea is known as the Democratic People's Republic of Korea and South Korea is the Republic of Korea, so it's South Korea. Yeah, be a bit worrying if it was the Democrat, if it was North Korea, wouldn't it? We're thinking they're trying to hack our website or something. Okay, have we done enough on this? Okay, all right, moving on then to the maintenance of the websites. Any improvements to be made? Okay, so we're into the re, not into the retendering yet, are we? No. All right, so there's C S G O six twenty one, review website maintenance contract. Hang on, the item, Louise, the the second bullet point on the item twelve, we don't have a paper for that, do we? Or is it, are the those two items the same item?
Yes.
We've got to discuss the maintenance, blah, 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 and then to discuss the approach for retendering, blah, blah, blah. Are those basically all subsumed into C S G O six twenty one?
Yeah, you're on mute.
Sorry, the middle point is separate to the final point with C S G O six.
Okay, so for the middle point, what is it you want us to talk about? Anything, any improvements that we've seen that we need to change?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I have nothing at the moment. Does anybody else have any improvements on either Discover Buckingham or or the town council website? Martin?
I found it very difficult because it's a subcommittee of a committee or working group, whatever you like to call it these days, of this communication group, because it's under resources and there's no way of seeing it when you go on the town council. Um, you get the economic development working group, which, you know, high, you know, comes out. But um, I think we ought to have a a dropdown when you go on resources to see, you know, this um, subcommittee.
Okay, so we have full council planning, environment, resources, towns and events, and then economic development working group. You think we ought to have our own item in that dropdown list?
Or any other one, because, you know, how else would, I mean, I found it difficult to find. I only found it because I went to the agenda and then looked at the, worked my way backwards. But then, you know, I'm a bit of a slow person when it comes to technology.
That would make sense to me and also have one as well for the newly created inclusion and diversity.
Because the agenda wasn't on the on the calendar either. So I couldn't get to the agenda from that either.
Oh dear, sorry about that. And we can certainly do that, though. We could add all of the committees to, previously it was just the main ones, but we have a lot more committees now, so we could add
You know, the economic development working group is in there, though.
Yeah.
And we are, and we are the equivalent thereof. In fact, we have more power and and longevity than the economic development working group.
Yeah, it would definitely make sense having top of there in the dropdown regardless of where they report to. Historically, I think that was just the list of committees that reported directly to full council. But actually, that doesn't make any sense to exclude things from that list for that reason.
A good pick's on the website, but I was seeing it scroll through as we're talking. But one of the EGR too, which seems to be, has friends up at Stowe, it seems now. Margaret?
Yeah, it was not so much a question or a suggestion, it's a comment. Um, I noticed that, or at least I think I noticed that the coronavirus thing that came up on the front page is no longer there. That's presumably deliberate.
Yeah, so we took that down when the last lot of restrictions ended. Obviously, we are still under some restrictions. Um, but as the restrictions get less, we find less people are interested in the page, so we took it off. And if we have to put it up again, we can. It's quite, the pages themselves still exist.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments about that or should we move on to the last point?
Um, I was, if I could just add something about what we're doing this time. We're doing some slightly different things with events this year. And we're going to make more use of QR codes that link to the website. Um, so the idea is you'll have a QR code that links to one page. That's for the July and August events this year, because we have a lot of July and August events. Um, and it'll take you through to um, a selection of small icons which you can click on that then take you to the events pages. So basically to try and give more up to date information to people about events and keep it constant and as accurate as possible.
Okay, that's great. That's brilliant. Sue?
It would be very useful to have some hints how people um, use QR and how you can access the ability to use QR codes. Because I would be struggling.
Okay.
Can you? I was amazed, Sue, um, just the other day, I took a picture of a of a router. It was in the community centre. And straight away, my phone said, oh, do you want to, uh, you know, use this as the password, as the, you know, password? Whoa. Yeah, okay.
Okay, interesting.
I mean, I think I've got a rough idea. You've 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 got your smartphone and then you've sort of like take a picture of it, but you need to download something first. What is the something you download?
No, you don't. Most phones now automatically, if you if you show, if you show your camera to a QR code, it will automatically find it and give you an option to click on that that option.
That's the kind of way the um, rapid Covid testing
Well, that's that's embedded within the Covid nineteen app. But your ordinary camera on your phone, your smartphone, will now find the source of a QR code.
That's a good point, though. We can quite easily have a little bit of text that explains, point your phone camera here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Make the code work.
Okay, moving on then to the next item, which was about the retendering of the website design. Okay, my only thought about this was that we, you've put in some suggestions as to what we're looking for in the next revamp. Um, Thursday, September, June is quite tight, I thought, for asking people to respond. But is that because we're on a quite tight timescale anyway? Louise?
Um, we could probably, if you want a bit longer, we could take a bit longer. Um, it's just that we need to start writing the tender documents.
Well, you need to get it out to members today and that's going to give them less than a week to respond. I would say maybe even give them the following Monday perhaps, which would be what, the eighteen, nineteen, twenty first of 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 June perhaps? I agree with not give people very long to respond. Because if you give people tight deadlines, they were more likely to do it on the spot rather than prevaricate and put it off to tomorrow and then it never gets done. But I would say give people maybe a weekend, another weekend at which to do it.
Yeah, okay.
And I also wrote down cashless donations to the mayor's charity. Are we are we now at that point, which I was talking about a couple of years ago, where people can make cash as donations into a virtual bucket um, at town council events?
Um, I hope so.
How have we managed that without subscribing to a, you know, one of those little sort of boxes you see in places? Or have we subscribed?
So there, now that sort of technology has moved on a bit, there are um, more things that you can do within people's phones. Um, but it's really about how our website could connect with other parts of our systems and and make, to make that transaction go through.
Okay, I look forward to hearing more about how that works, but I think it's great. Because people, I mean, crikey, I don't, often I go out without any cash on me at all. And obviously, if you want to snap all cash off of people at the, I don't know, at the next musical event in town or whatever, whatever else we're going to be doing it, or music not in the market, um, if we want to get some money into Margaret's, you know, mayor's charities, then having the ability to do this cashlessly, cashlessly, whatever, um, it's great.
It's not necessarily, yeah, I think we'll have to look at the different options and how expensive they are. If we wanted to be true contactless, that's probably going to be too expensive. Um, but if you've got a QR code that you can scan and then that takes you to a donation page that you can fill in, and that's sort of a medium ground that we can potentially include. Um, but we'll have to see what the tenders come back.
Okay, the more we can use, I mean, because I think we're heading that way now. I know it's, I know there are digital exclusion um, in implications here. A lot of people still do still work with cash for a variety of reasons, but I think we're going to still be able to take cash. But I think a lot of people, because of the lockdown and pandemic and not even wanting to handle money because of concerns about the virus, the more we can work with that crew, the better.
Yeah, well, it was an issue before really, because um, I know the last time I was at the Christmas parade, I was just talking to people watching the parade.
Yeah, exactly.
They haven't pulled any cash.
I mean, I think the graph has sort of gone up, hasn't it, though, in terms of people using, you know, because the limit is now sixty pounds, someone told me today, is that the case? Has it gone from forty five to sixty now for cashless transactions?
I think it depends slightly on your bank and the shop.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Okay, um, so are you going to release all these ideas that you've got at the moment in the letter that's going to go out? Or, you know, that's going to go out to to councillors?
Yeah, but obviously, I'll look at the councillors for feedback
Okay.
on their ideas.
So this is about shaping the tender documents so we can put it out tender and see who comes back and what they want to charge us.
Yeah, so in this, I'm really just looking at the website and the improvements we can
Okay, Martin?
Are you going to issue this out under confidential heading? Just to make sure that it doesn't, it doesn't get out in the wild before um, the tenders are published officially.
No, this is about working up the spec for the tender.
Yeah, exactly.
But we've already published it online now. This is already online.
Okay.
No, I, no, I think in terms of commissioning and procuring new services, this is not something to hold secret. Heck, if we get people coming forward with o- other ideas themselves, that shows they're a good, they're a good supplier. You know, we should be co-creating a better website design with potential suppliers. I think the more we're transparent, the better that is for everybody concerned, both suppliers and us, the 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 customer.
Sorry, I was thinking of the information that we were asking the councillors to look into or suggest that goes into the tender.
Well, that won't be public, will it? Because it'll go straight back to Louise or Bethany.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but does it go under confidential or does it just go, please don't circulate this?
I see what you mean.
Because when we collect it all, it's then confidential, but it's open before that, so
It won't be because we put out the tender and that's a public document. Even if it's confidential, people responding to it.
This is just the process of scoping what's in the tender, which can be public.
Okay.
Okay, moving on then to the next item, social media. Look at the report um, and the YouTube, we'll do it one point at a time. Again, I think this is for us to note. Um, again, all positive. I think this is evidence that the decision we took a few months ago to combine our social media accounts and save on staff time, but it's beginning to, you know, to show good results in terms of getting out there, the messages that we want to get out there. Any comments about any of this from anybody?
Just all very encouraging, really, and well done to the team for getting this far.
Twitter's not very popular, is it, though, interestingly enough? It's not the most, it's not the favoured medium, it seems. Instagram is way, way more popular than almost Twitter and Facebook combined together.
Which is definitely a very specific thing that you use for a specific purpose, which is talking, mainly talking to partners. It has less reach for other things, but we do still get contact from the public then, because
Okay.
not every person uses every social media. You sort of get overlap and then also places where only one specific person, people will only contact you on that particular medium. Quite interesting, really.
And why haven't we got a TikTok account? I want to see, I want to, I want to see members and officers dancing to, I don't know, Kylie or something, isn't that what happens on TikTok? I don't know.
But we have discussed this several times.
Have you really?
What, the dancing or the account?
Both. Um, I I I think at some point we will end up doing something like that, but it's quite a lot, to do it properly and communicate a council message well is quite a tricky thing.
Okay. So these are
This is
Go on, Sue, sorry, I'm looking at the document.
This is slightly slipping into medical things, but um, I wouldn't attach TikTok with a barge pole because of the Chinese connection. It worries me, the security.
Okay. It is probably one of the most used social media apps around the world at the moment.
I'm aware of that, yes. Dangerous, isn't it?
Or the FBI.
I I, my view is whatever you've got on the internet can be accessed by everybody anyway. So I've been on social media since nineteen ninety five and I've always been aware that whatever I'm putting out there and the amount of data that I'm adding into the pot, um, statements that I've made, um,
I think TikTok, TikTok really worries me, but there again, I don't really think that there's a realistic prospect of us all starting dancing on it anyway, so
No, probably not, probably not. There again, your, whatever mobile phone you've got, Sue, has probably been manufactured from China as well, though.
I know, no, I think mine was probably Taiwan or wherever Samsung comes from.
Samsung is Korean.
Oh, Korean, that's what, yeah, I knew it was somewhere in Asia.
Yeah, but there will be parts in there that probably come from China too. I think we live in a globalized world and that these things ship around all over the shop, really.
We're going down that that strange boulevard again.
We are, let's move on. Okay, so any other, I think, looking forward to some social social media plans? Again, all look very positive to me. Great, is all I would say. I don't know if you're looking for any particular feedback on this, Louise, Bethany? No, I think you're doing a great job.
I'll let you know when I find it.
I know that makes me sound like Mr. Grace from Are You Being Served? But genuinely, I think it's a very, very good stuff that you're doing here. And that's a reference you probably don't know, but there you go. Others will know that. Okay, so we're now looking at the recommendation with regards to the videos and seeing how popular some videos, some committees are to others. We don't and seeing how popular some videos, some committees are to others. We don't, we've had twenty-six average views. Is this per, per month, is it?
If you add all meetings together.
Okay, all right. But the most outstanding example is T C and E, who've had more than three times almost anybody else, apart, apart from full council, our environment, okay? I think, I mean, for me, YouTube is partly a repository, partly about our commitment to accessibility. And the big issue is, this is way more than we've ever had coming to our physical meetings when we were having them. And I think that's the important point, is that more people are now seeing what we do online than ever came to meetings unless they had a particular item on the agenda, they would have discussed like a planning application or something like that. So I think this is good, and I think we just got to carry on a bit. But I don't think we're ever going to be face, you know, YouTube stars, because hopefully we'll avoid the Jackie Weaver scenarios, and we won't actually have to go there. But Margaret?
Yes, one of the, right at the beginning, we were talking about positive outcomes from the COVID pandemic, and this is one of them, isn't it, that we are actually engaging better with our community as a result of our meetings being broadcast on YouTube. That's something really positive.
Yeah. Any other comments by anybody else? And we are noting the report. Anything else you need from us at this point, Louise, Bethany? You wrote the report, Bethany, but thank you very much. Okay, moving on then to the next item on the agenda is additional signage. And the proposal here is to spend some of our budget on signage to promote the entertainment events that we've got coming up as part of the fringe and beyond. And this is for what? These to be attached to lampposts. Wait, did I read this right? Or have I got that round the wrong way, Louise?
Yeah, so the, the thick sort of corrugated plastic.
Okay. And how big? A four size or?
I was getting quotes for A one.
A one? Oh, quite big then. All right, okay. Martin?
Well, if they're going to be A one, then that's good because they're bigger letters on there, but also you're going to have to put them up higher, aren't you, then?
Yeah, I, I'm a bit, I might continue looking and see if I can get the skinny one that, that's for you.
You don't really want those around at, at eye level, and that depends how tall a person is either. You know, if they are fairly rigid plastic, and maybe we shouldn't be using rigid plastic. I mean, it's not one of my areas, but, you know, if we're trying to be environmentally friendly, maybe that's not the thing that we want to do. Maybe we should put it on some stiffer cardboard or something which can be recycled. Or have boards that we can reuse, maybe. That would be a better environmentally friendly way of doing it. Is there no other place we can put these on? Could we not put them in the big banners that they've put on the lamppost up high? You know, and have this list and supply everybody with binoculars, maybe, but yeah, putting them on lampposts, I don't know. Sometimes make, you know, we go down the tacky field a bit.
We just, to some extent, this is an attempt to upgrade our use of lampposts from A four sheets that are covered in laminated plastic and get replaced with something else next week. So we're trying to, and, and the great thing about lampposts is there are lots of them. So you can put them around town so they get spotted. But when we put the banners up, getting cherry pickers out for those is a very costly exercise.
There are also tearing as well. I had to walk up Stratford Road last night, and the one that's just past the
Right hand side.
On the right hand side, on the same side as the football
Yeah.
club is, is now torn and needs replacing or repairing. With a good, a good bit of sewing maybe, but I think it's probably on the way out. Okay, so I'll be agreeable to this going on. I think it, I think it's, it's a good experiment. I'm a bit confused by the QR code having four corner points. I thought they only have had three corner points, QR codes.
It's not a real QR code.
Oh, right, yeah, because real ones always only have three, because that's how they find the right orientation. Okay.
Uh, just on that, John, then, if I may. So you're still thinking of cable tying these to the to the lamppost? Could I again suggest then that the cable points are not two points centered in the middle, but two points centered to the right hand side? So it sticks out of the lamppost a bit like a flag. So it's offset and it's, it's sort of, it's, it says, I'm not part of the lamppost. This is a sign that is meant to be locked at. Now, again, that may be a problem if you are putting up a little bit higher because they are not so flexible and you don't want people walking into them or stabbing their in their face as they walk past or something. But I know from my previous job that, you know, you're not allowed to put ladders up by the side of the road in case it topples over and you go into the road. So you, you know, you've got to cone off the road if you're putting ladders up on the side of the road. But, you know, maybe we could look at something like that and, and put them up, push them up maybe with a pole a little bit higher. That was it, John, thank you.
Okay.
Otherwise, yes.
Excuse me. Right, okay, we done with that? I think that's good. I think, I look forward to seeing them around the town. It also increases our presence and lets people know this is where their money's going, that we're trying to do what we can to, you know, support, you know, good wellbeing, happiness, joie de vivre in, 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 in the town. Okay. Right, moving on then, press releases. I guess we just note those. There's nothing we need to say about it, but quite a few obviously have gone out in the last period. And then we're on to any items that I have. I don't have any chairs items, you'll be glad to know, having only become chair a couple of hours ago. The date of the next meeting is the twenty-ninth of July, and hopefully everybody will be able to be here. We've agreed that we're carrying on with this timing. I, it does at the moment clash with the meeting of mine, but I, another meeting, but I'll, I'll prioritize being here rather than the other one, which might actually get changed anyway, I think, to the morning. So unless there's anybody else who desperately wants to say something.